Tonight's meeting has been updated. There are 131 pages in the current packet. Items G1 and G2 specifically have been updated. And with those, item G1 is the federal funding guiding principles that we will be acting on tonight. The worksheet starts on page 95 and the guiding principles on page 96. For item G2, the worksheet starts on page 97 of 131. The access and opportunity resolution is found on pages 126 through 129 of 131. And Commissioner Phi's amendment is published on page 125 of 131. Just so that you know what is before us this evening, and yes, there is a presentation on that item. We will not be having the standard second public comment period at the end of this meeting. Instead, we have over 23 people who would like to speak on tonight's access and opportunity resolution, item G2. So we're going to be having a special public comment session just for that item. And you'll each get two minutes each so that you know if you feel that folks who have been called before you have actually said what you wish to say, then please, by all means, when your name is called, just stand up and wave or something and we'll know that you concur with what has been said already. And thank you for saving us further time in this evening's meeting. But to be clear, the 23 of you who have signed up, you will get a chance to speak. And in the first public comment section, that is specifically on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you signed up for that first public comment section and what you really want to speak to is item G2, the access and opportunity item, then please know that you should be speaking in that special public comment section. So, oh, lastly, I wanted to let you know, for those of you who are familiar with this building, and particularly the first floor where we have two women's restrooms, the furthest one is currently out of commission because the door is broken. As such, you can only use the closest women's bathroom that is right just down the hall and to the left. So just wanted to let you know. But it's been updated thanks to our great facilities team and is nice and bright with new fixtures. So without further ado, would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And ma'am, I'm just on the lookout. You are allowed to have signs, but you're not allowed to display them such that you're blocking someone else's view. Thank you very much. So I don't know. Ma'am, is there someone to your note? Okay, great. That was fine. So, okay, we'll move on then to our first public comment section for tonight's meeting. Clerk Moss, who do we have that wishes to address us for non-agenda items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Roger Law. And then is there anyone else that would want to speak on any other related matter? I did not see any others in the room, and we'll go to Zoom after Roger. All right.
Mr. Law, we do have your hard copy.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Harrington and fellow commissioners. My name is Roger Law. I've been a resident of Washington County for over 40 years. Today, I will continue to read from Executive Order 14248, preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections. Section 7, compliance with federal law setting the national election day to achieve full compliance with the federal laws that set the uniform day for appointing presidential electors and electing members of Congress. A, the Attorney General shall take all necessary action to enforce 2 U.S. Code 7 and 3 U.S. Code 1 against the states that violate these provisions by including absentee or mail-in ballots received after Election Day in the final tabulation of votes for the appointment of presidential electors and the election of members of the United States Senate and the House of Representatives. B, consistent with 52 U.S. Code 21001B and other applicable law, the Election Assistance Commission shall condition any available funding to a state on that state's compliance with the requirement in 52 U.S. Code 21081A6 that each state adopt uniform and nondiscriminatory standards within that state that define what constitutes a vote and what will be counted as a vote, including that as prescribed in 2 U.S. Code 7 and 3 U.S. Code 1, there being a uniform and nondiscriminatory ballot receipt deadline of Election Day for all methods of voting, excluding ballots cast in accordance with 52 U.S. Code 20301 et sequentis, after which no additional votes may be cast. We look forward to Washington County returning to an Election Day deadline for ballots to be accepted and counted in federal elections. Thank you for listening to the Spirit of Truth speak through me.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to our online one, and we had one sign up. Deanna Johnson. Deanna, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Deanna?
Ms. Johnson, are you there? On the phone, do you need to do a star six? Or she's raised her hand.
Yeah, she's unmuted. Deanna, one more time, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. My apologies, new computer. Thank you so much to everyone this evening, to the Chair and the Commissioners. I know that we've touched on this topic before, but I know that you guys were open to some low-income financial assistance via Clean Water Services. I haven't been able to attend the meetings to see any follow-up, but I just wanted to find out if there was a timeline that we're going to encourage or implement something in the future, preferably sooner versus later. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, and since it's a simple one, I can answer here on the dais. Please check out the Board Work Session Learning Day Packet that is on the Clean Water Services website, cleanwaterservices.org. And if you have any trouble finding it, just please send an email to the Board email address that's also posted. You should be able to find it on cleanwaterservices.org. Go to the About menu and then from there. Okay? We just had some presentations on Friday.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Is there any other member online via Zoom which provided a public comment on any other agenda item other than G2 or anything for the county? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any additional hands, Chair Harrington.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, we are going to move on to tonight's consent agenda. That consent agenda consists of seven items. Two items from Clean Water Services, one item from Housing Services, one item from Health and Human Services, one item from the Office of Community Development, one item from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, and one item from Finance. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to tonight's consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we're going to move on to Proclamations E1. And we have a proposal before us tonight to proclaim July 20 through 26, 2025, as Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week. These are folks in our community who do a tremendous amount of work to help justice-involved adults to get the kind of supervision they need so that they can, once again, return to our community as very productive members of our community and to reduce recidivism. So I'm just super proud of what they do. So I need to stop talking because it's not about me and turn it over to Ann Ober, Assistant County Administrator.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. I am actually sitting in for Erin Calvert, who would love to be here tonight but is on vacation. And I just wanted to, before I hand it over to our two fearless leaders, thank both of them for their amazing work. Both Jennifer and Nate have done incredible work over the course of the last year. It's been a hard year in the services that we provide, and I really just can't appreciate them or thank them for the cultures they're creating or the leadership they're taking with their teams. They're going to walk through the resolution, and so I'm going to hand it off to them.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, I'm your Director, Nate Gowey-Ran with Washington County Community Corrections. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. We could use all the applause and support at this particular time. It has been a really tough, especially last month or so, in community corrections. And yet, all of the practitioners that work in community corrections have resilience, and they've persevered through many, many challenges. Modeling that type of perseverance for our clientele that have even harder challenges day to day in their lives, and we help them integrate back into society. We help them be crime-free. We prevent crime from even occurring. If they have difficulties, we help them along the way, and we have yielded success after success after success. And that speaks volumes to the practitioners, the staff that work in community corrections. And I'm so very proud to represent community corrections today and very proud to work for Washington County and for all of you as the Board of County Commissioners considering this proclamation to celebrate all of our staff here at community corrections.
Before Jennifer speaks, I want to provide, oh, Jennifer, I'm speaking over here. Tanya Angie, County Administrator, a bit of context of what Director Gowey-Ran was speaking to. So as part of the adopted budget for fiscal year '25 to '26, we needed to take $20.5 million in reductions from our general fund. As your Board is aware, it is our responsibility, your responsibility as a governing body, to adopt a balanced budget each and every year. As part of that, community corrections received a 13% reduction in their general fund dollars, and then we thought we were done. However, within the state budget, the state did not fund the community corrections funding model. And so that was a tune of approximately $3 million?
$2.4 million.
Okay, $2.4 million in addition. That really felt like it was the rug being pulled out from underneath and really challenges us to meet state-mandated requirements within community corrections. So resilience of the team is absolutely correct, and these reductions needed to be made within an under-30-day period.
And I am your Director of Juvenile Services Department, Jennifer Kirley.
Thank you.
I would like to echo Nate's comments about the resilience of our teams who are faced with immense community stressors and families that have a greater number of needs and complex backgrounds and situations. Our staff work really diligently with kids, families, and community, but for any of that to work, they're also working with the schools, the extended family, the mentors, the coaches, and everybody else in a youth's life to wrap around them and support them. I am so proud of the team that we have and the work that we do to promote community safety and also promote strong change and development and growth for folks in the community. Thank you.
And before you read, just because I have to make a comment about Jennifer and not just Nate, I do want to just once again commend Jennifer Kirley's leadership in forming a new contract with Marion County for detention beds. This came at a substantial savings in the amount of $1 million and, in essence, saved 10 staff positions. And for the fifth consecutive year, we have continued to maintain our culturally specific services for our juveniles that we serve. So just huge credit to Jennifer and the team.
Okay, thank you, Board. This week is very special to us. It is National Supervision Week for all folks that are under supervision in our care and in our custody. So without further ado, I'd like to read this proclamation for your consideration of a vote of yes. Whereas adult and juvenile community supervision is an essential part of the criminal justice system, and?
Whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and?
Whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile justice-involved individuals in the community, and?
Whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for justice-involved individuals, and?
Whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and?
Whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and?
Whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and?
Whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals advocate for community and restorative justice.
Now, go for it.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that on the 22nd day of July 2025, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim July 20 through the 26, 2025, as Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week and encourage all residents, all residents, to honor these community corrections professionals and to recognize their achievements because they are great.
Oh, Commissioners, we have a proposal for Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week as read. What are your wishes?
I move to proclaim July 20 to 26, 2025, as Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week.
I'd like to second that. We have a motion and a second.
Can I comment?
Absolutely.
I just want to tell you two, if you could communicate to your staff and take this to heart, you do a great job, and you are changing lives, and you're changing our community. And I just want to say, congratulations, you do a great job. Every day you come to work and somebody cuts your budget and pulls the rug out, and you persevere. And I just want to say thank you for the hard work you do.
Thank you. But we know there is a bottom. Yes, yes. So thank you very much for that perseverance, as noted, from Commissioner Willie. I think we all concur with the amazing work and the positive output that you and your teams make in individuals' lives, but also in the collective communities' lives. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Would you like a photo? We usually take a photo.
Yes, please. We have a newsletter, so we'd like to publish that in the newsletter. For those of you that don't know about our newsletter, check us out, Community Corrections Newsletter.
Ah, yes, and there is our photographer extraordinaire for these things. We have one tonight, and joining us tonight is our County Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer, John Steyer, for a public hearing to adopt an updated fiscal year '25-'26 Washington County Fee Schedule. Please.
Correct. Thank you, Chair and Board. Good evening. I'm here to bring back the fee schedule for your review and approval. It was presented to your Board on May 6 in Work Session and approved by the Board on June 17. How we have discovered an error in a line item where we have a single fee. It's the public land corner fee that was listed both under the Land Use and Transportation section and in the Assessment and Taxation section of the schedule. It was Land Use and Transportation had updated the fee this year from $5 to $10 as allowed by Oregon Revised Statutes 203.148. The Public Land Corner Preservation Fund allows fees for expenses incurred and authorized by the county surveyor in establishment or reestablishment of maintenance of corners of government surveys under the Oregon Revised Statutes 209.070. So while we updated the fee in the Land Use and Transportation section, we didn't update it in the Assessment and Taxation section. It's listed in two places because they collect the fee, and so we want to have it listed there. There were no other changes to the fee schedule as approved on June 17. And so tonight, we just request your Board hold a public hearing and approve resolution in order to adopt the fiscal year '25-'26 fee schedule with this correction.
And so it'll be set at $10 in both places, right?
Correct.
Excellent. Okay. Any Board questions on that? Nope. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Therese, Vice Chair Therese. And with that, I would like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the advance of the meeting. Is there anyone that would like to probably comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from our CFO, not seeing any hands raised, no one coming forward. Is there any member on Zoom that wish to provide a public comment to this public hearing? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'd like to close tonight's public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the resolution in order to adopt the fiscal year '25-'26 Washington County Fee Schedule.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move on to item G1. And this is an item that I will be presenting. So Vice Chair Therese, would you like me to turn the gavel over to you or to pro tem Commissioner Willie?
I think it's supposed to be pro tem Commissioner Willie.
Okay, so I'm turning the gavel over to you. So what item G1 is all about is one of the tools that the Board of Commissioners uses for major program development is a tool called Guiding Principles. It is a set of information that we provide to our two direct reports, meaning our County Administrator, Tanya Angie, and our County Council, Alex Barnett, and their teams to implement our direction. And so we have an item on the agenda tonight which touches on the subject of federal funding. But it is not the last time we are going to have to look at what the new contracts for federal funding involve. And so as such, we've had board discussion in multiple work sessions, and we have a list of guiding principles now at version four, which has items A through items L. And so that is my presentation on the proposed federal funding guidelines.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair. I guess, your chair. Chair, so Commissioners, do we have any questions about this? This is a revised document that was revised today, July 22, and is in the formal packet. Do we have any questions?
Well, actually, the version four, there were no changes that we made today other than finalized that that is the version we want to act on.
Ah, yes, that's correct. We did review it.
That's right. We reviewed it today in Work Session.
Yep.
So yeah, if I don't hear any other comments, I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I would second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the federal funding guideline principles as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Wait, wait, I think you, discussion.
Do you want a discussion?
I do.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let's have a discussion.
I just wanted to just sort of put a comment to the vote I'm about to take. I intend to vote no on this because I do not see how this is related to accepting federal dollars that include unlawful executive orders, and I don't see how it guides us in how we do that. So I see this as unnecessary, and I would have really liked to see some verbiage, some wording around not adhering to laws that, federal laws and state laws and executive orders or whatever we're intending to do that contradict our own state and local laws. So I wanted to see clearly articulated contradictions that we're heading into, and since I don't see that, I'm not sure what these words do and how they guide us. So I will be voting no.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. It's unfortunate, we had a pretty detailed conversation about this today in Work Session. You did not voice any opposition at that time or any concerns.
I've been consistent about not voting this.
Would you let me finish, Commissioner Phi? Okay? I show you respect, you show me respect. Okay? So you had your opportunity to convey this today, and you did not. So we're going to move on on this. So I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries four to one. And I turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Next, we'll move on to item G2. And I want to be very clear about this. What we're going to do is we're going to get a staff report, and that will include information that our two direct reports will speak to, Ms. Angie and our County Council, Alex Barnett, will be joined by a consultant who we have hired to do work on our behalf. And then we will have board questions on all of that. Then we will open a public comment period, and you'll be receiving two minutes to share your thoughts with us. And then we will close the public comment period. I will ask for a motion to get the resolution on the table, so a resolution in order, and then- then we'll go to board discussion. I would ask, no clapping, because we try to make sure that we foster a welcoming environment. And by making audible statements, you may be shutting down someone who has a different view of your own and would like to be able to voice their comments. Now, I don't have a problem if you do silent, you know, clapping. That's just fine. But we want to make sure that everyone who is interested in speaking has the opportunity to do so. So please know that. So Ms. Angie, we'll turn it over to you. Thank you. And Commissioner Treese, don't worry. I'll be looking for a hand raised, okay? Thank you. Have we given you the clicker? Great. Just want to make sure we've set you up well. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Board of Commissioners and members of the community. For the record, Tanya Angie, county administrator, and I'm joined today with Ann Ober, Assistant County Administrator, and Janelle Bell and Lucy Hamer from Espalzo Strategies. So prior to starting tonight's presentation, I wish to share with the board and the community a statement that I shared at ACRE last night. Washington County's rich diversity is what makes this a special place to live, work, and play. It's this diversity and commitment to inclusion that led me to apply for the county administrator position five years ago. To this end, I want to take a moment to clarify what the proposed access and opportunity resolution order, resolution order says and does not say. Unfortunately, there is a belief by some in the community that the county will not abide by Oregon's sanctuary promise law as a result of the board adopting the access and opportunity resolution in order. As this board is aware, this statewide law dating back to the 1980s stops state and local police and governments from helping federal authorities with immigration enforcement. Some members of the community have been told that the access and opportunity resolution will mean that the county will not abide by state law and will instead work directly with federal immigration enforcement. Let me be very clear. This is not accurate. The resolution states that Washington County will uphold federal, state, and local laws. This means that we will continue to uphold state law. This includes Oregon's longstanding sanctuary promise law. Let me reiterate, Washington County will continue to abide by and follow Oregon's sanctuary law. Thank you. We'll now move into a federal funding update, which I will present with Ann Ober, and then we'll turn it over to our consultants to walk through the journey that we have been on developing an access and opportunity resolution. So I like this slide because it grounds us in the work we do at the county. I'm proud to serve as your county administrator and work alongside 2,400 amazing dedicated public servants. In this, I can tell you, this is the pictures that they focus on each and every day, the people that we serve in this dynamic community. So we, we deliver our services to community members directly by county services and/or through contracts with local nonprofits and businesses. We do so in a safe and legal manner that provides access and opportunity for all people. We know that this does mean, because we have limited resources, that we may not in all cases be serving all people, but this is something that we strive for. And you heard me earlier speak to budget cuts, and this is what is so devastating, I will say, to me, and I know your board and our staff, to see the unmet need that we have here in Washington County. We do want to make sure that we also have a safe workplace for employees. Funds for county services come through various streams of funding mechanism. Property taxes, fees, also we receive funds from state and federal governments. The state and federal governments typically are not in a negotiating stance with us. The state is more so in a negotiating stance than the federal government. The federal government controls their requirements. They set their requirements within their contracts. And what we, we are seeing that really true and in front of us in a compliance aspect where we have to sign contract terms, and that's called attestation. I also want to put this disclaimer, and I previously shared with this, with this board that any federal presentation will have a disclaimer that this information is true to our knowledge as of this date. You'll see me in later slides walk through the timeline that we've been on since January. The federal landscape is evolving every day, and so what I may share with you tonight may be different than what I may share with you tomorrow. So we have seen since January the term executive orders. And I know your board has really wrapped your head, what does, what does executive orders mean to the work we do? And I know I've received many questions from community too. So an executive order can be issued by the President of the United States acting in their capacity as head of the executive branch. The executive orders then are used to direct agencies or officials to engage in a specific course of action that is outlined within that executive order, or in some cases refrain from a specific action. An executive order has the force of federal law. I'm not saying it's law, but it has the force of federal law when the president says to departments, "You must, you must execute on this executive order." It can be invalidated through legislation or through Congress. And actually, that invalidation comes through many times reduction of resources that would support the action of that executive order. It can also be found unlawful by federal court or revoked by the president or successor in office. We have seen with this administration revulsion of previous executive orders from the past administration. So executive branches such as housing, transportation are obligated to follow these executive orders. So now, so why does that matter to the county? We are seeing those language from those executive orders appearing within our federal grants and contracts. Since President Trump's inauguration, we have seen well over 100 executive orders. So this has been changing and evolving very quickly. As a county, we rely on 135 million in annual operating funds from the federal government. Approximately 90% of these federal funds are direct funding from the federal government, and about 10% are pass-through funding. That means they come through a different entity, many times the state. We are in the primary contract renewal period, July and August each year annually for grants and contracts. We are already seeing and have received funding, overviews, requirements, and documents that indicate we cannot use federal funds to promote DEI mandates, policies, or programs that violate any applicable anti-discrimination law. And there's also a second bullet point that we're seeing, the county will comply with all executive orders. I want to also indicate, at the same time, the county must adhere to federal, state, and local laws. So this includes the county continuing to uphold sanctuary law. We are receiving communications that some contracts may soon include language cooperating with federal law enforcement and language that would repeal Biden administration climate executive orders. Earlier this year, we did see the loss of actually climate-related federal contracts that the county was hoping to move forward our climate action work. There's also a provision that's known as the False Claims Act. The Department of Justice has historically used this as a tool against waste, fraud, and abuse. What this means is by signing contracts that you are signing and not acting fully upon, you could result in civil and criminal charges against the person signing the agreement. In addition, it could present organizational risk penalties and risk of returning funds. So it's not just for the individual signing, it's also for the organization. DOJ has authorized public, excuse me, private parties to protect the public interest by filing lawsuits. If the individual filing a lawsuit against an entity or person is successful, they get to then share in the monetary recovery of those dollars. Once again, the intent of the False Claims Act was to prevent waste, fraud, and abuse. So we have been on a journey since January. And so let me just take a few moments to walk through that journey. It feels like it's been many years, and while the days feel short, they also feel long at the same time. In January, we alerted the commission about the executive orders and their potential impacts to funding and how the, and at that point, we convened a cross-departmental team to coordinate response. Why is that important? As your board is aware, we are in the process of migrating to a new enterprise resource management system, that is our finance, HR, payroll, our internal system. At, at the county, we have a decentralized approach to grants management. I cannot just hit a button and outprints the federal grants and contracts. So we had to go through a lot of work to collect in a decentralized manner from all of our departments. What, what is even our federal contract landscape? Very fortunate that your board had authorized a limited duration position. Seeing the challenges that we have had in grants, contract management, with the influx of federal dollars through CARES and ARPA, we do have a limited duration centralized grants management staff member who has been vital during this time because otherwise, I'm not quite sure, and I see Ann nodding her head, how we would be able to get this work completed. We also started to actively meet with Van Skoyeck and Associates, that's the county's federal lobbyists, to provide the county with timely updates of what they were seeing at the federal level. In February, the Office of Management and Budget started to freeze federal grants and cancel some contracts. I want to underscore, this was without notice. So one day, I will just say flurry of calls and emails to myself and the assistant county administrators, housing could not access pull-down funds. It was, it was an alarming time because there was no notice, and then magically the funds started to freeze. But that was also the point in time that we started to see, and I know our community-based organizations started to see grants and contracts being canceled by the federal government. And in some cases, they were grants or contracts that our community-based organizations were getting paid in the rears, meaning they already expended these funds, and the federal government said they would no longer reimburse for those expenditures. This is also when we started to see federally disfavored words and warnings being issued in the areas of transportation, housing, community development block, grant programs, and health and human services. In April, April 28 is when the proposed budget was released, and I'll just point to a statement that's within the proposed budget, or excuse me, we have moved to actually adopted. Thank you. I'm just reflecting back in time at this point. Uncertain federal support is challenging the stability of services provided directly by Washington County departments or indirectly through pass-through dollars used by community-based partner organizations. This document also evolved our language and how we discuss our work at the county to the Office of Access and Opportunity, which is previously known as the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. We also reviewed what was our budget equity tool to ensure that what we're asking in the tool is consistent with law, and it is. And we continue to use that tool and renamed it as the Access and Opportunity Initiative. Within our budget equity tool, we continue to advance civil rights law and other relative laws, such as ensuring our services are accessible to all, all community members, something that we are proud of within staff and we have, have not made reductions in, is our language access services and continue to ensure that there is more accessible materials for our community members. In May, Information Technology Services completed a language audit of what are the initial federally disfavored terms. We have over 15,000 hits to these words on our website. In June 12, the board was presented, this was the first time in a public setting, an overview of the access and opportunity framework, and there was an opportunity for the board to provide feedback and discussion. And I know Lisa, Alicia Sorenger is in the audience, who serves as our access and opportunity director and was appreciative of that discussion with you. On June 17, the Board of County Commissioners discussed potential actions to comply with the federal grant requirements issued by the federal administration in order to preserve more than 135 million in federal dollars to help individuals and family meet their most basic and essential needs. You ultimately had pulled that action, and at that point, I issued a pause on signing new federal grants or contracts until we determined the compliance steps and shared that correspondence with your board during leadership, the leadership report out item at your board work session. This did include impacts to county and sub recipients. On June 24, your board discussed in work session and then issued a board statement at your board meeting to develop a path of a new resolution that honors the value of inclusion, reaffirms the county's commitment to advancing policies and programs in a lawful and discriminatory fashion. I had retained our partners, Espalzo Strategies, for the scope of work. I do intentionally call Espalzo Strategies our partners because they have been our partners at the county. Espalzo Strategies worked with your board to draft the county's equity resolution. They also have worked with our land use and transportation department on transportation planning. They are kind of capacity for our communications team when we have bridges. So just really appreciate their expertise and their knowledge of the county. I am not going to read this statement. The statement has been made publicly available. So June to July, we've been busy over this five-week period on alternative path to rescinding, revising, or amending the equity resolution. The new resolution builds on the foundation of the equity resolution and will move the county forward. There will still need to be work post this evening. Some of that work will include updating the board strategic plan update to reflect the access and opportunity framework, evolving the county website and other documents, evolving language and partner statements of work within RFPs and agreements. And from staff, and we believe that this can occur after this evening. And I, I don't, usually I like project management, I like to talk about phases of work, but I don't feel comfortable talking about phases of work because this is really hard. So we're talking about chapters of work. So we're completing and proposing a chapter for you on the resolution. Some of the work we immediately need to go, to work on is work with our community partners on language changes so that we can lawfully sign grants and contracts. And with this, I'm going to pass it over to Ann to talk about specific grants and contracts and funding.
Thank you so much. So there's been
So there's been a lot of discussion about what funds are being affected by these decisions. So we're going to walk through different sets of funding over the next three slides. This first set of funding are actually federal grants where we are receiving attestation requirements or expectations that we change language in order to sign the agreements. So the first one is the Community Development Block Grant. That is a program in which we support our communities typically in neighborhoods with low and moderate incomes to create livable and enjoyable spaces. We have the Continuum of Care Grants, it's 5.4 million dollars, and those dollars are really about housing households. So these funds pay for about 235 households annually for their housing. And then we have the maternal and child health block grants, and these funds are really about pregnant women and children with special healthcare needs. So these are ones that are currently sitting in our deck. We have worked on language to make them in alignment with the Access and Opportunity Resolution that is before you tonight. And our intention is that these grants will be funded, or will be signed this week. Next slide, please. These ones are different. So these are funds that are either coming from the state that are, that include federal dollars, or these are blended funds that include federal and state dollars. And in some cases, these are funds that we are doing pass-throughs to our CBO partners. So it's, there's a whole cadre of grants that we are trying to manage the language around in, in, let's see, in the process around the Access and Opportunity Resolution. So our goal here is that these ones are actually going to take us a couple of weeks to sign. We've been working, and I say we, but I really just want to call out the great work of Alicia Sojener on a grants document that helps our departments figure out how they can change the words and bring us into compliance before signing. And so they are working every day, they'll be working on this in the morning again with some of our grants. So I just want to talk a little bit about why these grants are important because I think it adds some heart to this experience. So right now, for those of you who have parents who may be suffering from Alzheimer's or dementia, the grant on the right-hand side actually helps families manage their parents' money when the parents are unable to manage their money. So it helps manage things like their social security to keep it from fraud. You also have programs in here for things like needle exchanges. We have things for new parents who are just trying to learn how to be parents. These are day-to-day things that many of us take for granted, and they're such critical services, and we just wanted to give you a little heart. I also wanted to call out one. We talked about how the federal grants are coming in just constantly. So this evening, I started working with Nate, Nate Gowen, I'm going to try.
Go, Ryan.
Thank you. On funding that will go to the district attorney, will go to our criminal justice team to try and support families who are going through both recovery from these injuries and also people who are trying to re-enter society. It's 4.6 million dollars, and that grant language is due by Friday. So the timeliness of this is really important, and I just want to tell you, even though this has been focused on the human services, these grants are touching every aspect of what we do. Okay?
And I have a question on the last bullet point.
Absolutely.
On the other slide, Tanya.
Yep.
The Oregon Health Authority Revenue Agreement, the last bullet point says blended state and federal funds and/or language that might align with executive order. One, is that just a typo, and you meant to pluralize that and say executive orders, unless you had a particular executive order that was?
The one that has been causing the most concern has been the DEI Equity Resolution, executive order very specifically, and that's where most of the verbiage has come out of that we are working on changing through these agreements.
And then when you say language that may not align, state and, so is the state saying one thing, and then the federal is saying one thing, and then how do we reconcile that?
Yeah, and we're having some good conversations with the state. Again, I think it was said earlier today that our relationship with the state and our ability to talk to the state and negotiate with the state has definitely been easier than working in the other direction. So we are having those conversations to make sure that we're meeting the grant expectations and feel good about our ability to sign and deliver on those expectations while still meeting the federal guidelines.
And this, that I'm going to call conflict with expectations that we're faced really impacts our Health and Human Services Department because that department, more than any other department, really works on braided funds. Braided funds being from the federal level, the state level, and also county resources. So I believe I've shared with your board before, we have to almost take this one grant and contract at a time, and we're before you with one action this evening, and there may need to be additional actions in the future because this is changing and it's evolving so quickly. Did that help answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've talked some about this, and I just wanted to highlight it. Right now, we do not have any requirements that require us to change any language for our housing vouchers. This serves about 3,400 households every year. This is money that keeps people home. We do expect it's coming. So because what we've been receiving are letters that prepare us for attestation language now, we expect this one is coming too.
I'd like you to emphasize the number of 3,410 households.
Correct. These are families. So as we're just trying to get our arms around all of this, we have been having conversations with our community-based partners to try and make sure that we are getting the language clear in the grants before we're signing. That is happening right now. In those conversations, you know, Tanya mentioned tonight that this is going to be a year's worth of work, years' worth of work. This is not the end, this is but the beginning. So we've had some early conversations with our CBOs. Those conversations will probably be weekly in the coming weeks, if not monthly. So we really appreciate everyone who's participated in those conversations and will continue to participate. We've been asked how we enforce this. So right now, any contract that comes through us, we have certain requirements that we ask for you to fulfill. And the way that that sometimes shows up, the way you, we find out if you have not been, is through an audit process. There's some discussion about whether or not the single audit, which the county is required to do under federal standards, because we receive so much money, could be a way for the federal government to confirm that we are meeting those standards. So I just wanted to talk about the why. We're trying to make sure that we're as clear as possible, but there is, there's going to be a lot of learning and growth through this process, too. And then the final piece is I just wanted to highlight why we needed to have this done tonight. So we have been operating into the new fiscal year. Several of these grants required us, or have a turnover of a year on July 1st. So we have been providing services over the course of the last 22, 23 days without these contracts in place. That meant that the county had to be prepared to cover those costs if we did not reach the resolution and were not prepared to start changing that language. And that rate was about $562,000 each week. We did use our SIP funds, our Strategic Investment Program funds, in order to back those up just to make sure we would have sufficient funds. And if we were able to secure the dollars from both the federal and state partners, then we will be able to move those back into operations elsewhere. I will talk about this. Okay, so we have been working in partnership with a pretty incredible group of county staff, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank them. This has been hard, tireless work over the course of the last several weeks, and several times a week, we've been meeting with 16 to 25 individuals representing different departments in order to find these solutions. In particular, I feel like I need to call out our legal team. Thank you to Alex Burnett and his team for all of the work they've been putting into this. Amon, in particular, has been doing an incredible job. Alicia Sojener, I've mentioned tonight for their incredible work around our language review. And then I wanted to call out John, who was up here earlier. John Steyer is our finance, our Chief Financial Officer, and has really been helping us find a way to make this program work. So everyone, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Ann. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to John L. Bell and Lucy Hamer from Espouso Strategies.
Great. Well, good evening, Chair Harrington, members of the Commission. Once again, for the record, my name is John L. Bell, President and Founder of Espouso Strategies. I'll ask my colleague Lucy to introduce herself as well.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Hamer. I'm the Senior Manager for Civil Rights at Espouso Strategies.
As was indicated earlier, Espouso Strategies, we were hired about four, almost five short weeks ago, after this board made the decision to not rescind the equity resolution, which we applaud you in that effort. We've been working closely with your board, as well as your Advisory Committee on Racial Equity, as well as your staff in helping to draft your resolution. So tonight, we're going to provide an overview of that process, as well as some of the findings of the surveys, as well as the focus groups and the listening sessions for your discussion as well as consideration. So Lucy.
All right. So this timeline that we have before you, it really only reflects Espouso's engagement. It doesn't go into the level of detail of Administrator Angie's timeline she shared earlier. So although this was a fast process, we really centered engagement throughout as we collected feedback from county employees, county partners, and Washington County's Advisory Council on Racial Equity, or ACRE. We came before you, the board, every week with findings and proposed changes to the draft resolution based on their feedback as well as yours. This iterative process resulted in multiple drafts of the resolution that endeavored to be reflective of the community it serves and all of the interested parties. And so in doing this, while staying true to the board's vision and aim of passing a resolution that honors the county's values while positioning it to execute contracts that will provide community-based organizations with the federal funding they need. So now we'd like to tell you a bit more about these engagements.
What you see here is a reflection of some of that engagement. As we indicated earlier, we've been meeting weekly with ACRE, and just want to give a shout-out to what a great representation of the community, dedicated individuals who show up weekly to participate in this civic participation. So on June 30th, we had an opportunity to review the feedback, as well as receive from ACRE, the outreach approach. We knew that we had kind of an abridged timeline to essentially hear really good feedback in a very focused way, and we relied upon ACRE to help us think about the community-based organizations, as well as community-based leaders who were important to engage with. On July 7th, we had updates and call to action for community outreach where members of ACRE helped us get the word out, as well as participated in listening sessions. On July 14th, we had a chance to review the draft resolution, as well as collected feedback. And I will tell you, it was live editing as we sought their feedback and perspective that we then brought back to your board. On July 21st, just yesterday, we had a review and as well as a discussion. And what we would say is, by and large, members of ACRE supported the direction forward. Next slide, please.
And so in addition to engaging with ACRE, we also engaged with county staff. And so what this meant for us was initially, we met with the county leadership team on July 2nd, one, to get perspective on their approach. It wasn't the right approach, how do we engage with county employees? We also held two separate listening sessions, the first on July 7th with, which had 39 participants, as well as a second on July 16th, which had 24 participants. Critically, that second listening session, we were able to bring them the draft resolution that we had presented to you, the board, the day before, so that we could get their feedback and thoughts and responses and reactions to that draft resolution, so that, again, we could incorporate those thoughts and feedback into a new version. In addition to those live engagements that were in person, we held an online anonymous survey. We got 91 responses in total. And so some themes came out, came out across all of these engagements. And so first and foremost, telling you what you likely already know, that county employees are deeply committed to their mission and their work. But what did come out was that many did report needing help navigating the challenges of this complex environment. And so the legal challenges, the questions around language, there's been so much discussion around what language to use. And so navigating those challenges, both internally as in county employees, but also in how they engage externally with community members and community-based organizations. They also reported feelings of fear, anxiety, and exclusion, but that there is a desire to connect across departments. County employees said the listening sessions were a breath of fresh air, and they really appreciated being able to connect with one another. They in fact thanked each other for coming and sharing their stories. But also fear on behalf of community-based organizations, saying that they are holding on to the grief, the trauma, the uncertainty for these partners that they work so closely with, and so wanting to connect closely with them. And then finally, staff members repeatedly emphasized the importance of clear actions beyond the resolution. So across the board, folks saying that the resolution isn't a standalone solution, but it's a step. And so many of them asking, the what next? And how can I be involved? What can be my role in navigating this environment?
And just a snapshot of some of the community perspective we had, again, we had targeted engagement with community-based organizations and interested parties. We had 178 invitations to participate that were sent, in addition to those sent by ACRE members. And again, just to sort of touch upon, a big thanks to ACRE for really helping us do this in a short amount of time. We had 50 successful connections. We had a CBO roundtable on July 10th where we had 19 participants. We had 26 registered for that event. We also had a CBO virtual drop-in that occurred for about five hours, where we had five participants, as well as 17 registered folks. We also had an anonymous online forum where we received 26 responses. And in similar fashion, a few tidbits that we heard was really a strong call for proactive and ongoing communication and guidance. Again, no surprise, I think there's a deep desire that we've heard from CBO partners for continued engagement. A desire to affirm commitment to equity and progressive values. The community expressed doubts about being able to walk two paths, one where compliance is prioritized, and the other path of equity. And so sort of that vexing challenge that we all find ourselves in in this moment in history. Participants expressed a desire to be engaged as, not just vendors, but as collaborators and co-creators. Again, just a reminder that they wanted to really emphasize that they are your partners on this journey.
And so engaging with these various groups, it did give us a lot of feedback in terms of what to include in the draft resolution, which we did bring before you, the board, throughout this process for your consideration. Critically, we continued to engage these groups after the board's feedback. And so this process wasn't a one-and-done touch point where we engaged with one group or one community member and called it a day. We returned to them to ensure that this process really did feel, again, iterative and reflective of the community it serves.
And just to touch upon sort of the resolution, staff, CBOs, and ACRE members broadly voice that the resolution should lead to action and accountability. Many express that they view the resolution as a step, not as a standalone solution. And finally, after voting on the resolution, it is recommended to continue engaging interested parties within and across the county to inform, support, and collaborate on any other processes that the county advances. So that concludes our presentation. We'll turn it back over to you, County Administrator.
So I think sometimes we need to reflect on where we began this presentation, and that's the people that we serve collectively, and our neighbors and friends. So at this point, Chair, I will turn it to you and your board for any questions of staff for Espouso, and the resolution, as you discussed this afternoon, is in your board packet.
Thank you, Ms. Angie, and to Ms. Ober, and to our Espouso partners. Really appreciate you. First, I, we have a protocol here on the Board of Commissioners that the Chair speaks last. So I'm first going to check in with each member of our board to see if they have any questions. Commissioner Snyder?
I do not have any more specific questions than I've already asked today.
It's okay. We'll come back to you. See, the mute can, there you go.
Sorry, I was activating other, other pieces, my apologies. My apologies. I don't have questions. I do want to express my appreciation to Espousal, to Ms. Angie, to our, all of the individuals that provided input over this, over this time period. I, and I, as co-chair of ACRE, along with Lillian Tsai, I, I just want to, I cannot emphasize enough how much I appreciate the recommendation that ACRE brought forward and the work that they put in. I know that Espousal talked a bit about that, and Ms. Angie did too. But at our, we had a half-day retreat, where, actually longer than half-day, on a Saturday that started this discussion. And during that time, that, our group agreed to meet every Monday night and follow this process all the way through, and their commitment to the communities of Washington County is, is just commendable.
So we'll come back to board comments later.
Okay, okay. I just wanted, I will, making comments about the resolution, I just wanted to say this about ACRE at this point. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, I better be brief. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. This is, to use Tanya's term, all hands on deck. We started this, as you pointed out, a few months ago, and I just want to say thank you for all of the hard work that you have done on this, and certainly the pervasive questions that you ask. So thank you. Is there a question there? No.
Commissioner Fie.
No questions, Chair.
Okay, well, I have a question. No surprise. Ms. Angie, you shared some information with us in work session today. And for those of you following along, it is in our work session packet, pages 61 through 63 of 64. And specifically, what I'm asking Ms. Angie to refer to is the highlighted yellow information that is on page 62. I have it in hard copy right here, if you would just like to share it from the piece of paper. It's with regard to home rule.
Yes.
And I want to make sure that we get this on the record, because there's been a lot of misinformation about what home rule involves and might allow.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, for the question. So as you indicated, this has been placed in the work session packet. So it is email correspondence between Courtney Van Duke-Dreesen and myself. Courtney was also at ACRE last night, and we had a community member ask the question relative to home rule charter. And in essence, can home rule charter create kind of like the policy option for us to not comply with a federal order or a state order? This is not the first time we've actually received this question. As a county, we've received it over this last year, from public members speaking about elections, too. So home rule, Washington, not all counties, not all local governments are home rule. So I want to start there. Washington County is, does have home rule charter and home rule status. This refers to the extent to which a local government may set policy and manages its own local affairs without the need to obtain separate authority from the state. Home rule jurisdictions have the authority to establish their own form of government and self-regulate for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, as well as to incur debt without legislative authorization. So I would like to point your board and community members to the Washington County Charter. And that sets out the charter provisions, or I kind of think of our playbook, the rules of how we will operate as Washington County. Home rule authority is not unlimited. Home rule jurisdictions are still subject to the state and federal constitutions and cannot exercise home rule authority where authority has been preemptive, expressively or implicitly. And so where it is preempted by the state or the federal, or the federal government. So in the case of, I'll use elections, and I'll also use sanctuary state, the state determines and is in charge, in essence, of overseeing our elections for the state of Oregon. For sanctuary, the state has a sanctuary law. We cannot preempt either one of those two things as the county under our home rule status, or, or trying to argue any other status. Is that helpful?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, I just wanted to add one thing, Chair. So Tanya mentioned a name, so that is actually one of our county councils. So this was actually an attorney who provided that information.
Yes, thank you. And this is not privileged. This is public, publicly available information.
Mr. Barnett, I also have a confirmation question for you. We have a voter-approved charter, hence home rule. I've read that charter many, many times. It's posted on our website. We have a provision in that voter-approved charter that the county cannot make any decisions on police, policing matters in cities. So we have no authority over police departments in cities. Correct?
That is correct, Chair.
Thank you. So where we at, where we are now is, we have no further board questions for our staff. Thank you very much for the great presentations. And we will move forward with a special public comment period for this evening. Before we started the meeting, Clerk Moss let me know that there are 23 of you who have signed up to speak during this opportunity. And so he will call each one of you up in due course, and you will have two minutes to share your thoughts with us. After that, you need to move on, and if you go over that, you will be kindly asked to complete and end your comment. So Clerk Moss, may we begin?
Yes, Chair, and I'll start. Does anyone need any translation services? Of anyone that signed up, raise your hand if you need any services. Not seen in the room? Okay, I'll call up on threes, and then follow-up of that. So Brenda Brunetti, Sandra Nelson, Doug Renaud.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Honorable Commissioners. My name is Brenda Barati, and I've lived in Washington County for 32 years. I acknowledge that all of you have a very difficult job governing, especially in this environment, and that you have to make hard decisions every single day. The recent executive order that requires the elimination of DEI programs is an attack on good governance. A diverse workforce isn't just the right thing to do, it's good for business, it's good for governing. We make better decisions and have better financial performance when we have diverse teams. We have a better county Board of Commissioners because you represent different genders and ethnicities. I've read the resolution that lists our federal and state laws against discrimination, and Oregon does provide legal protection for a variety of individuals. But that is different than having a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. A commitment not just following the law means that a real effort is made to attract, recruit, and hire people from many backgrounds. It means building relationships with organizations that attract diverse people. It means letting people know that they have a place here. The U.S. Western District Court of Washington has granted the first and second motions for preliminary injunction against the executive orders that tie funding conditions to a political agenda unrelated to the grants that this county relies upon. I'm sorry that Washington County did not join that effort. As the case winds its way through the courts, I ask that you continue the commitment of what DEI represents. I ask you to make the effort to bring many faces to Washington County. And as future executive orders arise, because you know they will, join with other counties across the country to file challenges. We cannot let this overreach and elimination of services to taxpayers go unanswered.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Sandra Nelson, a resident of Washington County. On the agenda today is the consideration of adopting an updated Access and Opportunity Resolution and Order, something that has caused a lot of concern, fear, and anxiety among some people. To comply or not to comply is not the question. Rather, to some observers, the question seems to be how the county might give every appearance of complying while maintaining commitment to its previously adopted values. To me, though, it all seems to boil down to contexts and meanings of words. What makes for a happy nation, or a happy county, which is the end goal for all of us, I think? I invite you to consider the context and meaning of what General George Washington is reported as saying at the disbanding of the army after America's Revolutionary War, quote, "I now make it my earnest prayer that God would incline the hearts of the citizens to entertain a brotherly affection for one another, for their fellow citizens of the United States at large. And finally, that he would most graciously be pleased to dispose us all to do justice, to love mercy, and to demean ourselves with that charity, humility, and pacific temper of mind, which were the characteristics of the divine author of our religion. And without an humble imitation of whose example in these things, we can never hope to be a happy nation." Father in heaven, the desire of the great majority of us is to be happy and to be in a community of happy people. Help us to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with you, in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Renaud?
Good evening. I'm speaking to you today with three requests. The first is to ask that you add Commissioner Fie's suggested language to the Access and Opportunity Resolution from Agenda Item G2 before voting on it this evening. I know from Chair Harrington's recent interview on OPB that she feels this language is redundant, but let me urge the Chair to reconsider listening to the only non-white member of this board. This language matters. Commissioner Fie's voice matters. Multnomah County has joined a lawsuit to challenge the constitutionality of these executive orders. My second request is for Washington County to follow in their footsteps, join that suit, another one like it, or file their own. Making our communities choose between our values and much-needed federal funding puts us in a position of perpetual compromise that will only worsen with each acquiescence. If You Give a Mouse a Cookie is a great kid's book, but it's also an apt cautionary tale. My third and most urgent request for you is this: Do not comply with federal immigration officials, including ICE, Customs and Border Protection, or any other agency attempting to assault, kidnap, or illegally deport our neighbors without due process. And finally, to respond further to Chair Harrington's interview remarks suggesting community members or elected officials are misrepresenting information in our advocacy work here, we're not misrepresenting anything. We are looking to the past as a way to predict the future. In 2020, the Washington County Sheriff's Office, led by Pat Garrett, an appointee of this Board of Commissioners, led by Chair Harrington, complied with a subpoena from ICE. The assurances from the county that you will not comply with federal immigration officials today rings worse than hollow. It is nothing less than gaslighting to suggest that our concerns are not warranted. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
All right, the next three, Evelyn Coker, Serge Deminkowski, and Beth Jenly.
Which one of you is Ms. Coker? Please, go ahead.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, my name is Evelyn Coker. I wanted to be here to let y'all know to not comply in advance with illegal government executive orders. Executive orders are meant as a way for the President to direct the organizations under the executive branch. They are not explicitly not allowed to redirect funding. Funding is something that is dispersed only by Congress, and this is our taxpayer dollars that we are owed as members of the United States. DEI mandates and DEI policies strengthen our communities. And if you think that complying to this administration will stop them from doing what they want to do with these executive orders, what they want to do is not eliminate DEI. What they want to do is hurt the communities that have had the gall to implement them. The, the policies that we have, depending on federal funds for, they can all be considered DEI. They all benefit specific groups and specific organizations. They are not, absolutely not something that we can play with. And the framing of, that we need to acquiesce to these executive orders, instead of this being done to us, instead of us allying with other counties, with our state Attorney General, who has been more than willing to stand up to the federal government and stand up to illegal executive orders, is unconscionable. This is not the framing that we need in the most diverse county in the state of Oregon. We deserve much better. If we are complying with illegal executive orders, then we have to comply with other executive orders, including one that was, that was put out and struck down only a few months ago, saying that all sanctuary jurisdictions need to comply with executive orders in order to receive any form of federal funding. That is not something that we can accept. And if we are not accepting that, and we acquiesce to this one, it's unconstitutional, and we need to move forward and be better as a county.
Thank you. Mr. Deminkowski?
Well, so the, the target for executive action against DEIA appears to be, appears to be Biden's previous executive order. In Biden's executive order, the term equity was defined as the consistent and systematic fair, just, and impartial treatment of all individuals. This is the E in DEI. Regardless of the legality of the Trump administration's executive order, the intent does appear to be more than simply a requirement that inclusion be replaced by fairness, equity with equality, and diverse with all. Simply changing the wording may not be enough to get the federal funds that we need. Or maybe the wording is enough, that the re- resolution you pass is ambiguous enough to open the door for these funds to be made available for purposes that they were not intended for, for not serving the under-resourced members of our community. There is a reason we use equity and not equality. I'm grateful to all of you for your commitment to the Civil Rights Act, ADA, and other anti-discrimination acts that we have out there in laws. If you pass this resolution, please remember that the next obstacle put in our path and our commitment to those struggling, or struggling, please remember that we don't have DEI policies because our existing laws don't protect against discrimination. We have them because they don't protect against being overlooked or ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jenly?
Yes, thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Beth Jenly, and Kathy Walden, who I'm here with, and I are members of the Steering Committee of Indivisible Forest Grove. Indivisible Forest Grove commends your weeks of work we've witnessed on the Access and Opportunity Resolution throughout the iterative feedback process led by Espousal Strategies. We are proud of your struggle to thread the needle of the anti-DEI mandates from the federal government, while still remaining true to the already established values of this diverse county. While we understand why, we do regret that immigrant rights and the protection and valuing of diverse gender identities were not more explicitly addressed in this resolution. We've heard Commissioners and staff repeatedly acknowledge the constantly-changing federal landscape. Being perhaps more free to use plain language, we would swap out constantly-changing in favor of capricious and cruel. Weeks ago, we warned that the appearance of compliance may not protect this county or its funding. We still fear this may be true. Therefore, we also strongly encourage the Commissioners to join the 60-county suit against the Trump administration's illegal and unconstitutional executive orders. Last evening, we heard during the ACRE meeting that Oregon's sanctuary state provisions forbid interfering with the federal government's lawful enforcement of immigration law. forbid interfering with the federal government's lawful enforcement of immigration law. We insist that ICE is rarely performing lawful enforcement. Instead, these masked thugs are engaging in unconstitutional kidnappings of peaceful immigrants and American citizens. So in addition, we also encourage ACRE to continue pursuing ways the county could protect our residents and citizens from the illegal actions of ICE. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
We have Susan Tate, Callie Peters, and Alex Redlinger.
Ms. Tate?
Chair Harrington. Let's put some human factors into this. I have a story from my diary, and I'm going to talk fast, so let me know if anything is coming up too fast. It's August 2022. My husband Roger and I are on our way into town for dinner, and we live in Aloha, and at 185th and Kinnaman near Aloha High School, I saw five black boys with a ball going towards the bus stop. Way cool, new kids. I'd seen black kids before, yay. The light changed, and we left, but as we cleared the intersection, two patrol cars and a motorcycle raced in, swerved, and I do mean swerved, spat grit, sand, gravel, you saw the dust. Police exited and began barking orders, and I do mean barking, at the boys. The very last boy turned around and looked at me as I passed in the car, and he had eyes like swimming pools and just as wet. And I thought, oh my God, your parents have given you the talk, haven't they? Turn around, I said to Roger, my husband. He tried, he did. If you know that intersection, that was not easy, and the boys were gone when we got there, and I could not see in the police cars if they were in the police cars. It's not news to me that some of my neighbors are racist, very racist. They are afraid of a skin color that doesn't match. So I have to ask, sanctuary law or not, if we enable ICE to get the police to help them, how do we say that we protect and serve when what we're actually doing is capture and kidnap? And I remind us all of that story of the Beaverton boy who got on a school bus and was taken by ICE then. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peters?
My name is Callie Peters, and I am a resident of Washington County. I speak today as a concerned citizen, not in my role as Direct Action Chair. I do not believe the Board's access and opportunity resolution and order was introduced with malice. However, I do believe it represents a disservice to our community as an act of capitulation and fear. I've reviewed the county's presentations, the resolution and order itself, the King v. County injunction ruling, the Board's work sessions, and listened to Chair Harrington's Think Out Loud interview. A key point from that interview was that the resolution simply addresses President Trump's executive orders on DEI, and that such orders have the force of laws unless overturned by legislation. By this logic, every executive order from President Trump would require a corresponding resolution and order. I argue that anti-DEI executive orders are unconstitutional. They contradict federal civil rights protections that are listed in this very resolution. This resolution and order sets a dangerous precedent. If the county is prepared to comply with any executive order, that is a slippery slope towards authoritarianism and white supremacy. It was also stated that joining the King v. County Turner lawsuit would be too costly. What about the cost and time of your staff to comb through the grants and contracts and change the language and the costs for working with consulting services? If the county signs these contracts, it will be attesting compliance with all executive orders, including those that discriminate based on race, gender identity, sexual preference, sanctuary jurisdiction status, and limiting reproductive care. As our elected officials, will you fight for our rights and dignity?
Thank you. Mr. Reedlinger?
Yes, that's correct. Hello, everyone. Commissioners, Chair Harrington, for the record, my name is Alex Reedlinger. I'm with the Coalition of Communities of Color as the advocacy manager. The Coalition of Communities of Color commends the Board's efforts to incorporate community feedback and refine the resolution to ensure compliance with all local, state, and federal laws, now known as the Access and Opportunity Resolution. The revised resolution is an improvement, but its broad language does not clarify the county's position on complying with federal executive orders on immigration that conflict with Oregon's sanctuary laws. While the federal contracts under the Board's consideration include language adhering to all executive orders, present and prospective lawsuits could mitigate the immediate threat of funding being withheld. Therefore, we urge the Board to take immediate action to codify its commitment to Oregon's shared values of sanctuary and anti-discrimination. The Board can achieve this by including Commissioner Fies's language on sanctuary protections in the revised resolution, joining litigation with the state of Oregon and other sanctuary jurisdictions to ensure the flow of funds pending judicial review, introducing a separate resolution, most meaningfully officially declaring Washington County a sanctuary jurisdiction, thereby codifying protections for all residents, as well as providing a written commitment that the county will adhere to all state statutes, including sanctuary laws. And lastly, requiring county staff to be trained in sanctuary law, compliance, bias, and racial profiling. Without further action to affirm Washington County's values and explicit commitment to sanctuary protections, BIPOC and immigrant residents, as well as community-based organizations, will remain vulnerable with the county having failed to ensure access and opportunity. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Next, we have Marcus Mundey, Anita Tang, and Garrett Rosenthal.
All right. Chair Harrington, Commissioners, Administrator Angie, and County Council Barnett, thank you again. Well, one thing, we got to stop meeting like this, but one thing, thank you for letting me share my comments with you and the leaders of the county. Every time I come here, I plan to say something, and then I hear about new changes that you've made, for the better, and I'm glad to hear about that. I planned to tell everybody to please, you know, join the lawsuits, that was said. I planned to tell everybody to please fight back against that, some of that was said. So I'm just going to make a couple of comments and try to use my time. For the record, I'm in agreement with most of what's been testified before you today, particularly my colleague Alex. However, and even as I acknowledge how tough your jobs are in representing the residents of Washington County with all of the decisions you have to make every day, I don't have sympathy for you. Each of you chose to be in your role, and we're relying upon you and your staff to make the tough choices that make our collective lives better and hold fast to our values as a county. As always, the community is here to help you, and we will help you, but I have a couple of questions. What kind of county do you want us to live in? What kind of county do you want to live in? Are you going to -- I want to remind you, and are you going to honor the clear intent of the voters who, back in 2018, resoundingly rejected Measure 105 to repeal Oregon's sanctuary state status by a two-to-one vote? The Washington County voters voted two-to-one not to repeal that. They wanted sanctuary protection for the state. And then the third thing is, are we going to resist the imposition of these draconian, nonsensical edicts from the federal administration now, or we are going to fight back later? I can virtually guarantee you, at some point, we're going to have to fight back, so I would encourage us to fight back now, whether it's joining these lawsuits or approving the proper resolutions to make sure we go forward. Let me just finish by urging you to please be bold in your vote and deliberations in your earnest representation of the most ethnically diverse county in the state of Oregon. Thanks.
Ms. Tate?
Tang.
Hey, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Anita Tang, and I am a resident of District One in Washington County. I am wanting to express my support for Commissioner Fies's position regarding this proposed federal grant and contracts on Agenda Item G1 that would obligate our county to abide by all federal laws and executive orders, even when they directly conflict with Oregon's sanctuary laws. I believe we must not be forced into choosing between funding and our values. Oregon's sanctuary laws was established to ensure trust, safety, and fairness in all of our communities, and it reflects a commitment to protect immigrants and refugee residents from being unfairly targeted or entangled in federal immigration enforcement. Washington County should not be intimidated into silence or complicity. We must demonstrate the courage to advocate for both federal resources and local protection. I urge you to reconsider the proposed resolution to include explicit language, upholding Oregon's sanctuary law, and to support Commissioner Fies's call for clarity, transparency, and community protection. Thank you for your service and attention to this matter.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here before the Commission, and my name is Garrett Rosenthal, and I've been a county resident for something over 30 years, and I've seen it grow in inclusiveness, in diversity, and also in its efforts to promote equity, and I think the county is much stronger and much better for that. To me, the matter is, to some extent, and I'm not going to offer advice, because that would be disingenuous, I think, on my part, but to me, the matter is not particularly complicated in a sense. It's words, DEI, we call it diversity, equity, inclusion. I consider them the cornerstones of the Constitution. All people are created equal, and all people have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So to me, the orders that single out DEI as something that we should look at as being discriminatory are a priori unconstitutional and should really have no force in law unless they're adjudged to be legal in some other sense. So to me, it would be simple, but I realize your process is not as simple, and I appreciate the deep dive you've done into this and the deep considerations that you've had. It's not an easy thing. You're between a rock and a hard place. For me, I would just change DEI to EID, equity, inclusiveness, and diversity, and that also honors an important Muslim holiday, and then how can it be discriminatory? But that's a simple solution, and I doubt that it would work legally, but it's worth a try. Anyway, so I appreciate the fact that a lot of people are concerned, and I appreciate your commitment to continuing to maintain the kind of community that Washington County has become, because we're the most diverse in the state, and it's very important to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Next, we have Dale Feek, Kipperlin Sinclair, and William Holcomb.
Chair Harrington, Commissioners, and other people in the room, I've followed this quite a bit. I've gone to ACRE meetings, I've been to county commissioners, your county commission meetings, and I'm really impressed with what the county has done to provide services for all people in the county, especially the people that need it the most, that don't have voice, the people that are poor, different, and need help. And I also appreciate you, Commissioner Snyder, in what you've done at Acres, and you, Commissioner Treese, you've listened, just like they did with integrity on voting and home rule. Home rule is so important, and I'm glad that County Commissioner Tanya Angie expressed that, and home rule needs to be taken very seriously, especially with the voter integrity and Bob Terry trying to blow that up. So we need to use home rule as explained, and we need to make sure that we do get funding for the people that need it. And to do that, we need to make sure we have language that can be not taken to -- so that we do get the funding for the people that need it in our county. So I'm not going to get this, I don't think, but I have a lot of friends behind me, and I am looking forward to the decision that you have to make, which can be heartbreaking for a lot of people. And so, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is it Ms. Sinclair? Ah, there you are.
Yes. Hello. My name is Kipperlin Sinclair. I am a Hillsborough City Councilor, but tonight I come before you as a concerned resident of Hillsborough and Washington County. Good evening, Chair Harrington, and the members of the Board. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed Access and Opportunities Resolution and Order scheduled for consideration this evening. While the stated intent of this resolution may be to promote inclusivity, the deliberate elimination of diversity, equity, and inclusion language without clear explanation on community partner impacts raises serious concerns about the transparency and long-term implications for our county and its many communities. Washington County represents 12 incorporated cities. Has the Board conducted direct outreach to these municipalities to ask how they want to be represented at the county level? Given the importance of DEI in local policymaking, it is critical to understand how this resolution might affect each city's autonomy, identity, and partnerships with the county. If tonight's resolution is approved, how will compliance with this new county's resolution influence existing intergovernmental agreements? If a city has partnered with Washington County under a shared DEI framework, would the removal of DEI verbiage at the county level force those cities to also remove such language to maintain IGA funding or legal standing? Additionally concerning is the potential chilling effect this resolution could have on community-based organizations. These organizations often rely on DEI principles to build trust and serve marginalized communities effectively. If DEI language is erased from county policy, will CBOs be forced to dilute or remove their own equity commitments to qualify for their partnership fundings? These are not rhetorical questions. They are foundational to the responsible governance, and they deserve concrete answers before any vote is taken on this resolution. The lack of clarity and public dialogue around these changes is unacceptable. I urge the Board to defer action on this resolution until a robust public process has been undertaken.
Ms. Sinclair. Thank you. You'll need to end now. Thank you very much. We have other community members.
I'm going to speak two more portions, and I'm done.
Sorry, ma'am.
Legal and financial impact analysis of altering language in IGA contracts.
Thank you very much.
Specific guidance for community partners on how the change will affect funding and policy compliance.
Ms. Sinclair, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll just take your time off of somebody else's time, okay? Counselor, you certainly know the rules and the guidelines in your own city, and you comply with the same. We expect you to do that here, too.
I understand.
Please, everyone, stop.
I understand. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I apologize, you will be appreciated.
I apologize. Thank you.
Sir, I did not catch your last name.
Holcomb.
Thank you very much. Please, go ahead.
Okay. I want to start by saying that I'm 16 years old, so I didn't vote for any of you, but in two years, I will. Contrary to what some other public speakers have said, I do actually believe that this resolution was written with malice, and I don't think that it should be passed. I want to thank Commissioner Fies for her tireless work in trying to prevent this from being passed, and her resolve and dignity has been admirable. This resolution is a disgrace to our country and a shame to your constituency. The President doesn't control the purse, and buckling under executive overreach only emboldens him. You've heard all of this and a lot more already. We've had, I think this is the fourth meeting, just in this room that I've attended, about this matter, and this current resolution is the evolution of those previous meetings. Surrendering to Trump doesn't accomplish what you're saying that it will, and this bill is simply a more vague version of the ones that have come before it. The fact of the matter is, our government has done enough scummy things that we don't trust vague legislation anymore. I also want to say that I recognize that Chair Harrington is not running for reelection, and so you don't really need to keep us happy, but to the other Commissioners, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Clerk Musk, who do we have next?
Next, we have Barry Johnson Smith, Jody Gibbs, and Jessica McBride.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson Smith.
All right. Good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, I'm Barry Johnson Smith, part of the Advisory Council of Racial Equity. Mr. Johnson, I just want to give gratitude for this whole experience. I do want to thank the commissioners for being open-minded, to not revoking the equity resolution and finding alternative solutions, especially Commissioners Snyder and Treese for hearing us out at the acre meetings and pushing for more time to figure things out. I do want to thank Commissioner Fie for staying firm and being the first to know revoking the equity resolution was not the correct choice, as well as asking questions that community members had about this ordeal. I know as a black woman in power, I can be scared to raise your voice in a space where the only one here, so I want to say you are a very courageous individual. Thanks to Angie and her team for helping me through this process. I feel I got a crass course of kind of government, and I appreciate them answering all of the questions day in, day out. I want to thank Lucy and Janelle from Espouse Drive for stepping in so urgently and helping us navigate this situation. I also want to give a shout out to acre colleagues for our continuous effort on addressing this situation. I will say I am disappointed in some of the changes to the resolution from today's work session. I feel it watered down the resolution a bit, but I'll say it's better than what we had last month. I know some of the community members won't be happy with all that's in the resolution, but I just want you to keep up the energy. Because the resolution that might be passed today does not mean we are done with the situation. We have to make sure the implementation of this new framework access opportunity is effective on supporting and caring for our communities and that it dilutes the spirit of the equity resolution. You being loud and showing how much you care about D and I got us to this point in the first place, so I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I want to say your concerns are valid, and you have every right to ask how will county government will protect our community members through this chaotic time. As John Lewis said, "Keep up stirring up good trouble." This is what I want to say for most of the testimony. I say I hope we move forward with a collaborative and compassionate mindset between county staff, officials, and community. We should not let fear guide our decisions, as it will cloud us and we will lead to decisions that conduct more harm than good. I look forward to working with all of Washington County to help turn the vision of one Washington County into reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gibbs, or Ms. McBride?
It's me.
Thank you.
Hello. For the record, my name is Jessica McBride, and I have lived in Washington County my entire life. And honestly, it is deeply concerning to me how willing the county seems to bow to an administration that is openly hostile to so many in our community. Less than a week ago, a father was kidnapped at a preschool around the corner from my house. This isn't some theoretical situation. This is what is happening. I urge you to join the lawsuit that more than 60 counties, including Multnomah County, have signed on to challenge the Trump's administration's attempts to withhold federal funds. And I echo the ACLU of Oregon's skepticism about Chair Harrington's statement on O P B's Think Out Loud that our county does not have the funds. At the very least, we strongly urge you to adopt the additional language from Commissioner Fie, the only member of this governing body with lived experience as an immigrant, to affirm that no resources from Washington County will go towards federal immigration efforts. I have heard many times in this meeting that this is the case, that Washington County will not do this. And so frankly, I find it unclear on why officially adding this language would be such an issue to you if this is truly the case. You were elected to serve our community, and right now, you have an opportunity to take a stand to protect every family, every parent, every grandparent, every child in our community, and I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Musk, who do we have next?
All right, the last one I have signed up that may be in the room, Katie Newcombe? In the room? Okay, that takes care of ours in the room, Madam Chair, so we'll move to the online. And it looks like Jody Gibbs is our first one online. Jody, can you hear us?
Ms. Gibbs, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Hey, okay. I appreciate your time this evening. My name is Jody Gibbs, and I am a resident here of Beaverton, Oregon. I just wanted to put in a quick comment. I believe that this should be tabled for the moment. I believe that more time needs to be spent on this to include the language from Commissioner Fie's amendment. There really does need to be protection on school grounds, in educational grounds, for ICE not to be able to come in and make arrests, especially when the school year is going to be starting soon. My own daughter is severely disabled. She's also adopted from Ethiopia, so I understand a little bit of the immigration process. I understand a little bit of what it's like, you know, to bring another person in from a foreign country. It's not an easy process. A lot of mistakes can be made, and it's definitely a lot of bureaucratic barriers to becoming a citizen here in the United States. With that said, I believe that schools should be a sanctuary, that our therapy centers should be sanctuaries, and that ICE should not be allowed in Washington County to have any arrests on either public or private schools or any other type of educational learning facility or sanctuary. So I do believe that tonight, I hope that you would at least consider a little bit more time and study and research on this, and as someone else has previously said, exactly how cities in Washington County will be able to, you know, react-
Stop.
-to the language. And so, I just, I hope that, I hope that there might be a way to put the vote aside for tonight and to include Commissioner Fie's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs.
All right, next, Madam Chair, is Mia Pruska. Mia, can you hear us? Can you unmute Mia?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, city council members of Washington County. I am speaking today in support of Commissioner Nafisa Fie's proposal to adopt an updated access and opportunity resolution strengthening Washington County's commitment to the protections of immigrant communities. Washington County has a long history of being the most diverse county within the state of Oregon. It's something I take pride in as a longtime resident of this great county. During my time as a refugee case manager, I remember Washington County's reputation being known to even my new arrivals as a safe and accepting community. This is exactly why Washington County needs to step up and be a state leader for the protection of our immigrant, refugee, and asylum communities. A father shouldn't have to fear for his safety picking up his child from school. Mahidi Juan Bobo Zode came to this county hoping for the same things that we all deserve: a safe life, a welcoming community, a place where children can grow up with a sense of belonging. To leave everything behind for this hope, your home, your culture, your community, your country, is a sacrifice and loss that so many of us in this room can't even begin to comprehend. I understand the fear of fiscal retaliation from our federal government. I myself have a job in Intellectual and Disability Services that is heavily funded through our federal initiatives. However, we cannot allow these threats to influence our commitment to ensuring a safe and equitable county for all that live here. Because if we fail to act, Mahidi, a man who did everything legally correct in accordance within the realms of immigration guidance and requirements, will be the first of many. ICE has no morals. They will target our schools, our neighborhoods, our hospitals. They will steal away people without cause. They will rip families apart. They will cause irrevocable harm. I hope one day that we live in a kinder world, that this time in history will be a deep, deep shame, something future generations look at in disgust, the same disgust we hold for our learning about the Japanese internment camps or the Vanport flood.
Thank you.
I hope that when that time comes, you look at your grandchildren in the eyes and say-
Thank you very much. You've had your two minutes. Thank you.
All right, next, we have DeKesha Ishwar. DeKesha, can you hear us?
Yep.
Please go ahead.
Hi. Yeah. Hi, my name's DeKesha Ishwar. I am 18. I grew up my entire life in Washington County. I was born in Washington County, and I'm a recent graduate from the Beaverton School District. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about my experience in the Beaverton School District. In Finley Elementary, for the record, we were taught pretty early on that language matters. We were taught that, no, you cannot call your classmates stupid, and no, you cannot ask someone where they're really from. And at the end of the day, you've been talking a lot about how language is going to get tweaked, language is going to get changed. But language matters, and how it's getting changed matters. Because at the end of the day, any change in the language that weakens the support and protection of our diverse community, of the Indian community in Portland and Washington County that I'm part of, in the community of chronically ill people that I am similarly part of, that is a symbolic betrayal of every single person in Washington County who had to grow up with language that was unkind, who had to grow up with language that didn't protect them, who had to grow up with language that we now would even consider to be discriminatory. And so at the end of the day, I urge you to ask yourselves, are the actions you're taking really protecting your constituency? And I urge you to continue listening to us, because we're going to continue showing up. We, as a community, do not live in an administration where we have the luxury of sitting back and letting resolutions and action items get passed without question. We live in an administration where the word "women" and COVID is being banned from grants. And I'm wondering if you are applying for those grants. Are you similarly not going to be able to support our communities that are vulnerable? Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next, Madam Chair, we have Maggie Myers. Maggie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Please go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to speak pretty plainly, because like many other people here, I've already voiced my concerns about the access and opportunity resolution. I was additionally disturbed by the board indicating that they are unwilling to pursue litigation against the Trump administration. The county should be suing this administration, as many other counties are doing. But what I really want to say right now is that I do think it's important for the board to adopt the language or now amendment proposed by Commissioner Fie to protect and uphold our sanctuary status in Washington County. We know that ICE abductions have already begun in our county, and they will only intensify. And if we don't assert our position now, we leave room for further attempts by this fascist administration to wield its unlawful authority by potentially using our county sheriff's department to support ICE. I think it's beyond naive to assume that this could never happen. What Commissioner Fie is proposing is not a big ask. You have the power to adopt this to, at the very least, reassure the people, your constituents, that you will stand up for immigrants and refugees and that our county will remain a safe place for them and for all of us. And I also just want to say thank you to Commissioner Fie for being a leader and for doing exactly that, for standing up for your community and for being willing to fight. And I hope the rest of the board will follow your lead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk Musk, who do we have next?
All right, the last person, Madam Chair, is Mercedes Eslyde. Mercedes, can you hear us?
Yes, Mercedes Elizalde. Hello, commissioners, my name is Mercedes Elizalde, and I am the Director of Advocacy at Latino Network. I want to begin by thanking the board for not moving forward with rescinding the equity resolution, but instead, listening to the community and charting a different path forward that still seeks to defend justice and fairness. Over the next several months and years, your staff will be pushed in all sorts of ways to violate not only the historical commitments that have been made to the public, but they will be asked to violate these very principles in this resolution you have for you today. You cannot meet the expectations of this resolution if your staff don't know what to do when, not if, but when they are asked to violate state law. Washington County staff must be well-trained in Oregon's Sanctuary State Promise Act and county policies on how they apply to both protecting physical space and our data infrastructure. And while the county wants to avoid litigation, a process for ongoing evaluation of this approach must be part of implementing this resolution. For now, Washington County may rely on the bravery of other elected officials who are on the front lines of those court fights, but that will not always be sufficient. There is no easy way out or simple road to compliance. The federal administration wants to turn you into agents of harm by demanding that you make children homeless, that you take away care from sick people, that you take food away from hungry children based on their immutable characters. So while this resolution is rooted in protecting the community as it should be, you must enter this eyes-wide open. That compliance will also mean intentionally causing harm. This is not the first time immigrant communities have been harassed, beaten, kidnapped, jailed, or even killed in our shared history. But there is no America without immigrants. There are only Americans who have forgotten their immigration story. So as you vote for this today, I ask you to take a moment to remember your immigration story or make a commitment to relearn it and hold that energy to fuel you as you fight for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up for tonight's meeting in person and online.
I just want to double-check that Kathleen Walden did not want to testify tonight.
No, correct.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we will close tonight's public comment hearing and ask, I would next ask for a motion on the access and opportunity resolution and order. Do we have a motion to take action on that resolution and order?
I still move.
And do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to consider the access and opportunity resolution as published in our packet. I would now open the floor for Commissioner discussion. Chair Harrington, can I make a motion to amend? Yes, we had to put, as you know, in order to have any amendments, you have to have the main item on the table through a motion and a second.
Chair, I move to amend the motion on the table to include the following paragraph in the access and opportunity resolution and order, whereas the state of Oregon has enacted laws establishing Oregon as a sanctuary state, limiting the use of public resources to enforce federal immigration laws and affirming the rights of all residents to access services without discrimination.
We have heard a amendment, a motion for an amendment. Is there a second to the amendment? Hearing, no second to the amendment. The amendment is tabled. Folks, 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 if you don't stop, I'll reconvene this meeting over Zoom, okay? So, and you can all keep one another company, and we'll have the meeting in our offices from Zoom. So please stop. Please stop.
May I comment, Chair?
Please stop, okay? Otherwise, I don't want to go there. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
So-
The floor is yours.
To those of you in the audience, we had a work session and an executive session on this resolution and order and Commissioner Fie's proposed addition. We ask our legal counsel if this would change the impact of our resolution and order, putting us more at risk of not being able to access these funds, which, by the way, every one of you will be impacted by the lack of these funds.
Ladies and gentlemen, please silence yourselves. This is our time to speak from the dais. If you would like to go and cheer on whatever you want, you can do so from the work session room, but not in here, not while we're having our board discussion and deliberation.
Thank you. We were advised not to, by our legal counsel, not to add this additional whereas to our resolution and order. So we are going to comply with legal advice because that's what we pay them to do, is give us legal advice. So that's what we're doing. And that's why there's no second to this motion, and I'll pretend I didn't hear that comment. Thank you.
I'd rather not have to eject people from the room. Please stop, sir, or you'll have to leave the room. Do you understand? Okay. Commissioner Willie, is there anything more you would like to share as part of Commissioner discussion?
No.
Okay. Who would like to speak next?
I can.
Go for it.
I have a number of, I guess, points I'd like to make and make sure that the community understands my deliberation and thinking. I am first very thankful that we did not repeal the equity resolution, which was originally proposed in June. proposed in June. I think we did, and frankly, the county team and our community did a ton of great work with our community-based organizations, their leaders, and our advisory committee in this subject area. You heard from one of the leaders of that group. The feedback from CBO leaders and frankly, from our own advisory commission are things that I'm relying on fairly heavily as I make my decisions around this. I also think that protecting the services that our most vulnerable communities need is of vital importance to me. I don't know how many, if any, of the members of the community that are in the room today are dependent on these services, but if you're one of the 3,400 households that receives almost your entire rent paid every month and are dependent on that almost entirely, this is a huge deal if we make a decision that does not support you in the future. I do not, even after listening to all the testimony tonight and giving a lot of consideration to this and in consultation with our county council, our public safety leaders, including both our elected sheriff, she's elected, by the way, not appointed typically, she's elected, and our elected district attorney, I don't see a direct connection between decisions we would make around immigration enforcement or participation and the work we're trying to do today. I don't see that direct connection. It doesn't make sense to me. I also think it's important to recognize that what's been said tonight in a number of instances does not really recognize what control or authority local government has over the federal government and its enforcement actions. We can make whatever decisions we want. We are in a sanctuary state. The resolution before us recognizes following state law. That's not an optional experience for our staff or for our leaders. But I think it's important for the community to understand that just because we have all that in place, doesn't, there is nothing we can do that would prevent federal law enforcement from coming into any jurisdiction and doing what they want to do unilaterally without our support or our consent. That's not how our government is set up. That's not how the federal government works. It's not how the state works. It's not how the county works. We don't get to tell federal enforcement that they can't do things in our jurisdictions. We can try to prevent them from being in our spaces. That's already, that's already protected. So I think there's, I feel like there's a fairly significant misunderstanding about what our level of control is related to the federal government. Yeah, I may not like it. I might even give a thumbs down, just as you're doing over there, ma'am. But that's the reality of the federal government we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Treese or Commissioner Phi, who's next? I'll call on you.
You want to go online?
Go ahead, Commissioner Phi.
I'm still having trouble finding that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Phi.
I want to start by saying thank you to every one of you in this room who took the time to come and testify and show in support and in solidarity. We will get through this and we will prevail. I also want to thank our county administrator, Tanya. I also want to thank ACRE members and our great consultant, John Nail Bell, Lucy, and the entire Espousal Strategy. You got us here in the most thoughtful possible way, the most thoughtful way possible. So I just want to commend you all and thank you so much. In regards to the resolution and order, I will vote yes on the access and opportunity resolution and order, not because it is perfect, but because it allows us to unlock critical resources that our community desperately needs. We cannot afford to leave money on the table, especially when those dollars are intended to support the most vulnerable residents of Washington County. This resolution helped us move forward in accessing that support. But let's be clear, the protections within this resolution will not be as strong as they are today without the voices of our communities or without my leadership in bringing those voices in this process. I was the only commissioner who proactively worked with the community, community members to strengthen this resolution. I brought their fears, their hopes, and their lived realities into this conversation. I offered language that made explicit what too often goes unspoken, that state law matters, that dignity matters, and that local government has a duty to stand between vulnerable communities and systems of harm. Let's also, let me also be clear about the direction of this resolution points us toward. Its intent is to authorize the county to begin signing federal contracts. Many of those contracts contain terms rooted in Trump-era executive orders. These orders were never subject to full public debate and in many cases directly contradict Oregon state law and Washington County's values as a home rule county. What's even more troubling is that once we sign these contracts, the compliance obligations don't stop with us. They cascade. They will be pushed down onto community-based nonprofits, service providers, and trusted partners. That means local organizations who serve immigrants and refugee families might be forced into positions of either complying with harmful federal directives or risking their funding. Let's not pretend this is a neutral act of governance. If we sign these contracts without clearly rejecting federal immigration enforcement mandates, we are effectively attesting to comply. And if ICE, and if ICE later attempts to enforce one of those executive orders, the county will have already signed away its authority to object. That is a liability legally, morally, and politically. I'm putting this on the record so that when enforcement actions happen, when families are harmed, or when nonprofits are coerced into compliance with unjust conditions, the community will have this critical moment to look back. This was a decision point and we know exactly what was at stake. So yes, I support this resolution to ensure our community receives the resources it needs. But let it be known, I will not continue, I will continue to honor these contracts. I will continue to up, to hold our county accountable. And I will continue to fight for transparency, protection, and justice because that's what leadership requires. Thank you so much. And this, it does not end tonight. To be continued.
Commissioner Treese?
Thank you, Chair. And I want to thank everybody that provided testimony this evening. I appreciate the information and the spirit of the information, your spirit that was brought forward. I want to use terms that I heard tonight about our federal government. I agree that it is capricious and it is cruel. I agree with that. I also know and agree that we, that we are taking the right steps by focusing this targeted and direct RNO to make sure that we can, we can provide the $135 million to our communities that's required. We want to make sure that we are reducing our risk, as Commissioner Willie talked about, and we want to make sure that we can provide these dollars. However, I also believe that as county leadership, we need to continue to look forward, as has been pointed out earlier by Ms. Angie, as the landscape changes. We need to look at our options around litigation. We have not, we have not made a final decision not to enter into any litigation. That is still on the table for discussion and we need to make sure that we understand what opportunities we have in that venue as well. The resolution and order is one venue. There are multiple venues that may be open to us as we move forward. And I fully intend, and I trust that my fellow commissioners, fully intend to look at every opportunity we have to ensure that our, all of our communities in Washington County have the, have the, have the knowledge that we have their best interests at heart. And I can guarantee you that that is the case. The, as far as the immigration issue goes, I'm open to discussions about what capability the county may have as we move forward. And I just wanted to make sure we all understand that the county had, we have our limitations as well in terms of what we can do. But at the same time, we recognize the pain and the, and the, and the fear, frankly, that our communities are feeling right now. So with that, I want to say that I do support this RNO as a, very, being very specific and targeted. And I appreciate the work that our communities at large have provided, the work and the energy. I appreciate ACRE and I appreciate the discussion that we have had as commissioners to get to this point. And I thank each and every one of you for your support of this RNO. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. As is our norm, I will speak last. So yes, I fully intend to support this evening's resolution and order. I want to start by thanking our community members, not only those of you who came tonight to attend and/or who testified tonight, but also to the folks who sent us emails. I read those and I know I'm not alone here on the dais of commissioners reading those. I want to, please stop. So I want to thank my board members, my colleagues, for taking in information in real time, right up to our meeting the morning of July, June 17th, where we learned with new information that we may not have to rescind and replace the equity resolution of February 2020. There might be a different path. At that time, we were still facing the prospect of June deadlines, but as presented, our county administrator did an awesome job of leveraging some flexible resources that we had to buy ourselves some more time. But we have no more time past tonight to take action on this specific focused area of this resolution on access and opportunity without risking, if you paid attention to the presentation of the contracts that are due before the end of July and the ones that are in the queue for August, $14 million worth that goes into service of constituents here in our community. And then there's more for the full 135. I want to thank our ACRE members for their time, their very thoughtful feedback and review. I want to thank our employees, our community-based organizations for helping us be, to form up a reasonable access and opportunity framework. Your feedback was invaluable and the guidance and support from Espousal Strategies was indispensable. Thank you. And I know our work together is not done. Ms. Angie, I want to thank you for all of your efforts, the sweat and tears that you have helped each of us individually and altogether on this journey. And I want to thank county council for leveraging so much information and resources to help us make thoughtful decisions. This is a necessary step. It's not the destination, it's just a point on our journey together. Some of you may not agree with the actual circumstances that we're facing. That's okay. That's your right. Some of you may not agree with our course of action tonight. That too is okay. It's your right. It is unfortunate, in my opinion, that some of you have been misled about what this access and opportunity resolution involves, particularly in the arena around immigration enforcement. Being mindful of my obligations and our community needs, as a sworn member of this county commission, I will vote in favor of this resolution. I also want to say, I find it very disingenuous to present that there is an option for our CBOs or that we have a choice to protect our CBOs between having to accept federal funding or serving their community. There is nothing we can do to protect them. There never has been. What choices they make has always been their choices. We can make choices to try to set them up, but at the end of the day, they make their own choices. And there's only so much we can do. So I appreciate my colleagues who have been on this journey with me in shaping this access and opportunity resolution. I know that our work together is not done. And with that, we have a motion and a resolution on the table. I would like at this time to call for a vote on the matter. Those of you who are supporting this access and opportunity resolution and order, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next on our agenda, we have board announcements and I will start with those as is usual. We will not be having a meeting next Tuesday, January 29th, being the fifth Tuesday of the month. That brings us into the month of August. On Tuesday, August 5th, we'll start our meetings with a work session at nine. We'll pause that and then move into our Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00. And immediately following that, we'll have our board business meeting. We project at this time that that'll be probably around 10:50 in the evening. On Tuesday, oh, and we'll reconvene in work session likely after the lunch break. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I meant about 10:50 in the morning. Thank you for catching my error. On Tuesday, August 19th, excuse me, August 12th, we'll have a work session that starts at 9:00 a.m. On Thursday, August 14th, we'll have a roundtable meeting that starts at 9:00 a.m. On Thursday, August, excuse me, Tuesday, August 19th, we'll have a work session that starts at nine. We'll pause that and reconvene at board meeting at 10:00 and reconvene the work session, depending upon what's on the agenda, but certainly no later than the lunch break, after the lunch break at 1:00. the lunch break at one. On Tuesday, August 26th, that will be the last Tuesday of meetings for the month of August. Work session will be in the afternoon like today, but starting at 2:00 p.m., and a board meeting will be in the evening at 6:30 p.m. Are there any other board announcements for this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting for Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. I also wanted to make sure everyone knows that while I am away for the remainder of this week until Vice Chair Trese returns from her vacation break, I have selected Commissioner Jerry Willie to serve as Chair Pro Tem. Then, commis, excuse me, Vice Chair Trese will be back here, so she will serve as the presiding officer should there be any business matters or meeting needs next week while I'm away, and then I will be back in the office on Monday, August 4th. Thank you.